Alright, it's five o'clock guys. We're gonna go ahead and get our work sessions started. And Shannon had to step up to make us some copies, so she'll be right back. So we're gonna ask Councilman Brewer to open us up in Portland tonight.
Father God, thank you for the day you have given us and thank you for allowing us to come here and do the city's business. We ask you, Lord, to give us an open mind and an open heart that we may make the right decisions for our people. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Alright. I know we got first on the agenda, it says Stephanie Engel and Animal Shelter to discuss modification of job description for Joanna Font to the kennel supervisor or floor supervisor. And I know you're in charge. Let me ask you something, have you guys even gotten with Jane? Because we didn't get a copy of any updated or amended or new job description, so...
Yes, we did. We have a copy here, I thought you said we have one.
We didn't get one, so what we're gonna have to do, because I know I told Shannon that this, I think you guys remember the last meeting, we needed to consider this during the budget time. So get, um, where you going?
Oh, you got it, Heather.
Yeah, Heather. We're gonna have to get her to make us some copies of this and Jane's gonna have to be here too to also like, he'll go over with this. So just, and we also gonna set some budget work sessions, so we'll be able to go over that during that. So just get us some paper cop, I know I look like a paper copy, I don't know about everybody else, just so we can go over.
So we're not gonna do this tonight.
And Jane's not here either.
Okay.
But make sure we get the copies before you leave.
This was handled before, it was supposed to have been taken off and just some lack of communication now, so.
Okay, alright.
We'll get it done, thank you. That's right.
But before you leave though, go ahead and get her to make the copy so you can just hand them out to her.
Thank you.
Because we're gonna get some budget work sessions set up for next week.
Okay, I know, I understand.
Did you guys get anything else? I know Stephanie's out.
Uh, this was all she wanted me to discuss tonight.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Alright, next is a set of public hearings to give consideration to approval and planning commission recommendations to rezone properly located at 101 East First Street from DTV to MX dash two for residential use.
First available date?
I think that should be regulations.
That's what I was saying, uh, what's it say?
It says residential.
It is, it says residential. That's Dr. Um, Bedenso.
Okay. So first available date?
When is the next meeting in September, um, do you guys have a calendar?
Actually, I'm getting it. Sixteenth.
Next on the agenda is Police Chief Rondeal Muse to discuss. Next on the agenda is Police Chief Rondeal Muse to discuss agreement with Jacksonville State University for forensic services in education.
I think Jason's good.
Have you got the sheet and shows what this basically about? It's a Jacksonville State has heard of the forensic services thing, it's actually streaming great and will help us a lot. I think the charge is five hours in a year, but they would handle all of our forensic evidence and come out and help us make cases, rape, robbery, murder, assault or stuff like that, and it's a very minimal price, and these are experts.
Let me ask you this, Jason, so we're not, um, this isn't something that we're about to start immediately, so this is basically gonna be in addition to the new budget as well too, right? We just wanna go ahead and get the agreement locked in. Okay, alright. Any questions on that yet?
Yeah, it's a great program, working with the coroner's office, I've seen this firsthand, Talid and Mopford and that and other areas, so I think we need to.
Do not be doing, I just have a lot of things on my head, so I gotta see what is on my head. Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks, Jessica.
Alright, you're up next. Next is still you, Police Chief Rondeal Muse, but we have cases to discuss, we hold you between the City of Silicon and SPD K nine and the Silicon Board of Education for ten inspections consisting of one half day at three hundred per half day.
Yes, it's the same as it was last year, nothing's really changed, we really do ten inspections per year minimum, you know, and they get together for education, that's our K nine program, we get out all the days, it's the same thing we've been doing.
Did you get paid for work, Dr. Austin?
We have it here almost, you have a copy of it, I'm out of here.
He said he's good.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
And then I'll skip one, you have one more, Jason. Police Chief Rondeal Muse, well, Jason is here to discuss, you know, you between the City of Silicon and Silicon Board of Education for two SRO officers for the city's, um, city schools.
Again, basically the same thing, but this year we do have two and the same agreement would be as well though.
Let me ask you, so what about a car situation? Do we already have a car situation there?
We're working on it, we have one for them now, but we're actually working on one for, they appreciate for half of it and all that, and we're trying to get all the specs and the prices on the truck and say it will be.
So as an additional, or are we gonna take one of the ones from the?
It will be a new truck.
Okay, alright, alright. Alright, so still, when is like, when are we expected to like, to get that information, I guess that price, so we can?
Well, we, I'll show him what he does most of the places, he's not bad, so he might answer better than I could.
Uh, so basically, it's something that we've put in the budget request for the new year, four patrol vehicles and one SRO truck.
Okay, alright, and then we're gonna split the cost with the systems and all that SRO.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, you have anything else, Jason?
Uh, the only thing I have left is I would like to wish Wendy Wilson the congratulations, he has a good year been today.
I think, yeah, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you, Jason. Alright, next on the agenda, personnel from airport to discuss emergency issue, send them key members in the airport.
Alright guys, so what we're gonna talk about is our AWOL system, that is Automated Weather Observation System. And that is used by the medical helicopter guys and all the jets, charter jets that are coming to our airport. And it's a very necessary thing that they have to have, that they can't fly if they don't have this information. And this machine is dank. So it's really old, had an issue last year with somebody that hit a, a power pole, caused some problems with insurance with you guys, and they denied it because the system was so old. But we're asking for the funds to replace it immediately.
Are you guys asking, so you're asking for the whole one twenty-six, or are you asking for, so you're asking for the whole amount?
We, yes, we need the whole amount. We actually have that in our budget for the new year, because we knew it was going, but this last storm that we had, it pretty much ruined some of the sensors, it's no longer available.
Can you split halfway?
Um, I guess we can try to do a, do a little meeting.
I got, I got some more questions.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Yeah.
If we continue to have to split it halfway, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay.
Right.
If we continue to have, to split it eat halfway, we can't, we can't move forward a lot. We, we paid, we had, ended up paying, we paid more than half when we had the work done, the mulching work done, so that was an FAA violation. We paid for more than half to have that done, because what we submitted to you guys, FAA came back, said that's not enough, that costs another thirty thousand. Um, we had to do multiple hangar repairs, because the hangers have gotten old and they were leaking and rusted. We had weather, as you guys are aware, the things that are unpreventable, that we've had to pull out of our funds to do that. Um, we were just given five acres of land from the IDB with a clause that says that if we don't do something on it in ten years, they're gonna pull it back. We can't, we would love to build hangers on that, but if we continue to have to pay these type of expenses with what we're earning off of gas, and if we lose the people that are there with the life flight, they, they pay rent to be there, and if we, if we lose them, then we can't, that we, we won't have an operation. So it's very vital that we have this, and it's very vital that we get some assistance in doing this, more than just making us halfway, because if we continue to make halfway, we're never gonna get, be able to get hangers, we're never gonna be able to utilize that. We have a waiting list for people who want hangers, and we can't do anything about it, because we can't, every time we feel like we're getting some funds built up, we have something, you know, unpreventable, this is not anything any of us planned, but it's unpreventable, and it basically wipes our savings or anything that we're saving aside torsos.
So in other words, you say no, you can't be halfway, what you telling us?
We, we, we'd really appreciate that help on this from the city.
I have, I have a few questions, um, okay, you know, it just has to make sense to me, so tell me again, what, tell me again the, the importance of this and tell me, because I know you said it's an emergency, and I know that we're trying to get into budget, so this is something like your man needs to be done, like, and it's, you're asking for it to be approved tonight? Or, how long, how long has it been down?
It's been down by three weeks.
So, okay, okay, so this just happened?
We already had a guy come and look at it.
Okay, so this happened, it happened nine weeks ago? Okay.
It actually happened no question, if you wanted to look back, if we started, but it's over thirty years old, a piece of equipment we're talking about is over thirty years old, and like he, uh, I'm sorry, Wade said, when we had the accident out on two eighty, there was a power surge, and that's burned, and you can see in the picture, it burned some of the components on the inside. They're so old that they're incredibly expensive to replace, so if we replace one chip in there, that, right now, that's sixty thousand dollars. But then you've got five or six other of these old chips that are, in six weeks from now, they're gonna burn out as well, and it's just more, it's cost effective, you just go ahead and replace the old with something new.
So this is gonna buy a whole new one?
Whole new.
Okay, so I guess we've been having problems out of it for a while, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Alright, and the only reason I'm asking, because this is a significant amount, and, you know, we really can't say yes and decide where we're gonna pull it from, because we are trying to, trying to get rid of it for, for the budget.
It's a hundred twenty-six thousand, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, well just remember that Life Flight will not be able to legally fly their helicopter in an emergency to pick anybody up, that's gonna hurt their business, and they're gonna wanna pull out of Silicon if we don't fix this immediately.
You should have started with that.
I like why representatives would have been here tonight, what was his name?
Kermit.
Kermit, but Kermit's under the weather, because we felt like Kermit could come and express to you guys, it's Wade, the importance of this.
He said it's been there three weeks?
But that, yeah, it's.
It's not been quote down three weeks, it has been taped up for three weeks.
And now it's gone.
It, it is about to be gone, if we don't fix it, it's gonna, it's, it's eventually going to fall apart.
But when it goes, that's when Life Flight can't go.
There's a piece, excuse me, there's a piece of it, it's called a birometer, something like that. This piece, and it's so old, you can't hardly find it, and they're, and they're not supported, it's kinda like buying a car radio.
Now, we're on the same page, I just gotta, it just has to make sense to me to ask the, um, the, the people.
There's actually critical information that is not reporting right now, and I've talked to Life Flight guys, and, you know, if their, if their headquarters finds out about it, there'll be an issue.
Okay, so let me ask you this, so if we were, if we're able to do this, how long would it take to get this piece of equipment, like, do you already have, like, is there already one you look, taking a look at?
There's a sixty-degree plate, and, and, to explain to you height, or to explain to you height, it's a lame as hell. You're flying along, you wanna land in Silicon, you flip the radio to a certain frequency, and it gives you the barometric pressure, the wind and wind speed, the altitude, where the cloud layer is, and if it's, it's higher load, or the barometer that gives you that barometric pressure is wrong either way, it can be, it can cause you to, so you'll be on approach, and you might be a hundred feet below, or a hundred feet higher than you would if it was working correct. No, but you're not getting, you're not getting good information. So what's happened with the, with the, with the medical people out there, is they can't fly, they, they, they can't, like, night, you can't judge the ground, right, you can't see the ground, this is black, everywhere you look is black. So you don't, you can't, you have no depth perception, until the light from the aircraft or whatever shines a light on it, then you can kinda see where everything is. I've been flying out of there for fifty years, and, and this thing, I remember when they put it in, and it's great, I, I mean, because you can listen to it, you can be ten miles out and listen to it, you can be almost a Montgomery, almost listen to it, barely can hear, but you can hear. Well, most airports have this thing, majority of them, and with the, the medical people out there, if, if we don't do something or, or head that way in some reasonable amount of time, they'll leave, they'll be forced to leave. So we don't wanna do that, we don't want them to go away, and they have had two other, two other, matter of fact, companies that have, have just recently set up, um, bases close to us, one in the other state, one in the US, and they, you know, they're all in competition for the same, for the same work. And, and I've had friends that have had heart attacks and been flown, burned in, and if the weather is too, too bad, they won't go, but it has to be pretty bad for them not to go. And you might have a ceiling of clouds that's thousand feet off the ground, or if they know it's a thousand feet off the ground, and they wear night vision goggles, so they can see, takes very little light to make those things work, so they can see the ground, but you can't judge very well at night, at night time is the biggest.
No, at least that's a big safety issue.
It's a safety issue. And Jay, if I, if I could help you make a point, the city's still on the airport.
Right.
The city, the authority has done a great job of raising money for entrepreneurial projects and hangers and doing all these other cool things that are about raising additional revenue and becoming self-sufficient, but this is like you rented a house, and you got a problem with the house, you can't live in it anymore, because if you cannot provide that basic core service, you put everybody at risk. And that's, that to me is the key, we gotta, we gotta find the money, but it's not one of these things where you just waited too long to prepare it to make it our problem.
And I wanna remind everybody up there, like, like Wade said, we did include this in the budget we submitted to you guys for next year, but we need it.
Oh, that, that, okay.
We need it now, so when you're looking at our budget for next year, and you're like, hell, we just gave them a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, or we just paid out a hundred and thirty, you can pull that off that budget.
See, like, like Lisa said, I'm sick here, traded before, so I see what goes on, anytime there's a problem, I'm the one that gets the call to either fix or not fix. So there's things that we do out there, and I really wish y'all would come to visit us, but there's things that we do at the airport, which I won't say, there's repairs, there's, there's stuff that, just, just normal operating calls, and, and we have to fix them.
Which you, which you would have probably asked the city for, but as a minority, you don't.
Exactly.
Yes.
We don't, we're not gonna nickel and dime you today, we're not gonna do that.
No, we get it, that's why we have you guys, and plus that you can come and explain these, these things.
So this particular item is, is a must-have, see, if we're in a, we're able to do that, we have old airplane stuff that is working better, but if, if a certain, a certain piece goes out, which is part of that barometer thing, that gives you barometric pressure, if it goes out to replace that, and it is not currently supported by anybody, it's sixty thousand.
And then we may as well, that's half of what it would cost to just buy a new one.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. So instead of putting the band-aid on, you're correct, instead of putting the band-aid on, just go ahead and buy the whole hospital, and it will be done next.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to see where we can, um, I'm sorry, what? Alright, we're gonna be the wisdom of everything, because I, I still, I still know that there's somebody that might have to make the tough one, so, but there is a place where we can pull it on. So let me, let me ask y'all this, so, um, I guess y'all already have a, um, y'all know where y'all gonna get this from, right?
You had the quote.
And that's what this is?
Also, there was a sticky note in there, and it had some figures.
She took the one with the sticky note, or she gave it to the mayor.
Okay, so that is what we're currently paying for just the phone line for that unit, and that's like three, over three thousand dollars a year for a phone line, and with this new system, it'll be voice over IP and cellular, and we'll have a thirty-five dollar, and so two hundred and fifty-three dollars, fifty-four dollars a month.
And we're not gonna waste six, waste sixty grand trying to repair it.
Right.
Alright, Shannon said we can pull it from the, what did you say, Shannon?
The city improvement.
Alright, and I guess this is considered the purchase order, so you can get this taken.
Yeah, we can use that to do a purchase order.
Alright, and it's on here to be consented tonight?
It's not, because I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, alright, so we can add, so we'll just write it in for this to be taken care of tonight.
It's here, we're talking about.
Well, thank you for explaining, because now how?
Thank you, sir.
Not, not yet, not yet, we still, a couple of, still got another. But no, but thank you guys for coming to explain this to us, because you have to remember, like, we're just regular old people, so without you people, we wouldn't know, you know.
Like Jay and Wade have said, y'all come out there, see what we do, we have, we have two full-time, well, we have a full-time and part-time employee that we pay out of our funds, so that's not any a burden on the city. Uh, we, we do a lot of the groundwork, we do, we try not to, we don't like to come up here and bother you guys, because, you know.
Well, no, we know, it's gotten better over the years, you guys are trying to be self-sufficient, and we do appreciate that, but, you know.
Well, I was one of the, I was one of the original people when we did that, that's been eight or nine years, I don't know how long it's been, I've been on there a while, and, and I've seen if you feel it bad and ugly, but, uh, but we, we do try, and, and I think, I think you just come out there, you don't even have to stop, just come out there and look at what we do. And in later days, we get compliments from people that, you know, people that come in from who knows where, we get compliments of how nice airport looks, and it's just because we work hard to do it. And when I, when I came to the board, when I came to the council during the Doug Murphy, um, administration, that was the first thing I told the council president, I said, how many entities of this city do you have that are self-sufficient? I think we're a hundred percent self-sufficient, but we're pretty close, and, and he looked at me and stared at me and said, none. I said, well, this is why I was wanting to change this, to try to get the city in the right direction with this, so, so it doesn't become a burden to see.
The Jonas Brothers, to, to end, I'm here, the Jonas Brothers have landed out there, they went and played at Farmington, we have several celebrities that actually have landed out there.
That's why y'all shouldn't have invited me, see, didn't invite me then.
For all the Alabama fans, the road, Big Salem's plane landed out there before, so.
And Elon Musk has been there twice.
Elon Musk, so we're, it, it, we're focusing on the, the life flight, but we do have a lot going out to the, um, dark horse.
Well, we agree that, you guys, we're very fortunate to have our airport, so thank you for everything that you do, but, and also thank you for being patient to explain it to us, because we're just regular people, we don't know what goes into it, so.
Thank you for this.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Jeff.
Alright, we're moving on. So Shannon, um, you're not running out, or I'm gonna get this one out right here? Okay, thank you. I think so, next on the agenda is census uniform and door mat agreement.
I should have copies bad on your tablets. It's just the same.
Just re-upping the same thing.
It's just re-upping the same thing.
Nothing changed. Or the shopping street.
Shopping street and all the door mats.
Alright, next on our list is the Cusavella rescue squad, this is just the UTV. And Shannon just wanted to make all of us, um, copies, I know we've been, um, I think we're ready a month now, and this is the, um, the quote that you guys have?
Yes, ma'am, actually two quotes there.
Oh, did I, did I miss one?
There's one from Silicon Marine and one from Woods and Water.
Oh, okay, just want them to have a picture of that. And tell me again, what was the allocation, um, Shannon, what was their allocation?
Twenty thousand left.
Twenty, okay, so all you're asking is for us to just allow you to reallocate the twenty that, um, we approved for you in this budget, and you're gonna cover the rest, right?
How much did you say the allocation?
It's a little over twenty-three thousand.
What is, what, what is the total, can you give us the total amount?
Twenty-three thousand, I think, and there's a, you know.
Okay, yeah, so all, because we're not approving any additional funds, you're just asking us to, um, let, allow you to reallocate the funds that were approved, and you're gonna cover the additional costs, right?
Yes, ma'am, that with the addition of the ten thousand dollars Talid counting has donated as well.
Okay, alright.
I allocated it.
Alright, so I don't have a problem, since we've already given you guys the money, thank you for, um, yeah, coming back and making sure you just ran it across us before just spending on something that we didn't approve. You guys have any questions on that?
Good.
Thank you.
I like the quotes, appreciate it.
Oh, well, hold on, I guess I should have asked, well, which one are you gonna go with? The cheapest one, right? The Silicon Marine?
Now, to be fair, Silicon Marine didn't have our tax exempt notice beforehand, before they did the quote, and Woods and Water did not, so there is tax in Woods and Water, so there's not that much difference, we are gonna go with Silicon Marine.
Alright, what you do is that, alright, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. And then too, um, we have a few action items on the agenda tonight, so we have, we are gonna have to start at six AM, we have, how many public hearings? We have thirteen public hearings tonight. Thirteen public hearings, anybody else have anything else?
I need to do an add item.
Alright.
Um, we have the add item that was just mentioned for the airport authority, that should be number twenty-nine.
That's gonna be number thirty.
Number thirty, you got it.
We gotta add a second public hearing.
Got it, okay. I'd like to add this thirty-one.
Hold on, so she said we're gonna add a second quote here?
Yeah, I put second public hearing for the rezoning for planning commission. It got delayed in doing all the public hearing, that's.
So it's on the work session, but it's not?
It's on the work session, it's not on the, yes.
So that would be twenty-nine?
Yes, that would be twenty-nine.
And number thirty would be the airport?
Yes.
And number thirty-one, we have a resolution that the council would like to introduce, I'll make a copy available. In response to requests for guidance on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the chief examiner of the Alabama Department of Examiners and Public Accounts concluded in a letter to Mayor Heigl dated August fourth, twenty twenty-five, that raises were given to two employees without harbor council approval. The examiner directed that the city should ensure all personnel matters and compensation changes comply in accordance with approved procedures and policies. On May twenty-second, the council reminded the mayor that both raises were given without the council's approval, and that one raise was not complying with city policies specifically with the educational incentive plan. The mayor was directed by the council to rescind these raises, but declined to comply. The mayor was again questioned at a later city council meeting and advised that he would not comply, and an email to the city council dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, that may have disagreed with the chief examiner's conclusions, and declined to comply with the examiner's directives, that said he was to suspend a vehicle allowance effective immediately. We do not believe that's been done, we don't know yet, that payroll cycle has not occurred. In the avoidance of doubt in accordance with the law, the city's policies and conclusions of the Alabama Department of Examiners and Public Accounts, the city council has no option at this point, other than by official resolution, to direct the mayor to retroactively rescind the raises given without city council approval. The resolution we have, which would be Resolution seventy dash twenty twenty-five, directs the mayor to rescind the raises, failure to do so within five business days, the city attorney is directed and authorized to pursue action to make sure that this takes place. I'll give copies of this to Shannon and to the mayor.
And we all have copies, and then. There was one employee that was given an integral five percent pay increase without a government grant.
Who was that?
Ron DeWes, when he was, when he got president.
We would need to look at that, but since he's now chief, that would be separate. We should definitely, definitely know about that and any others. Uh, and, uh, um, I have, the council has copies and I'll circulate copies when, when we break.
Evan, are you adding to your list?
Um, the resolution number, uh, we already have one on the agenda tonight.
So that would be seventy-one, seventy-one.
Should we grant this until we have everybody that we know, so we're not setting the city up for litigation?
Absolutely not. This is related to the order from the examiners, related to a few questions that they asked. This must be resolved immediately because it's been too long. We don't have time to wait.
And we also have a copy of the chief examiner's office, um, the letter from the chief examiner's office, city, for anybody who would like to see it. I, I know, I was expecting, I guess Michael Rice is in here. Mayor, do you have any update on that, um, that bridge stuff? I know I've been asking about the bridge on Brickyard Road. But it's still got the cones sitting on it.
There's no update on, um, there's a charge with God that will finish up April and then next year. So we can carry the frame.
So you, you know, does anyone else?
I don't think.
Alright, so we do have.
I was told to be here by Tony Davis to bring work to the council, asking permission to use the parking lot in my parade. I don't think I made it on the agenda though.
Uh, and I think that, won't she have to go through the police department or something like that?
Yeah, I did it. My wife was put in a minute and she's approved it. Um, I should, I was told to be here to.
Alright, come on, we'll ask you. We got time.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Thank you for telling us. Tell me your, um, tell me your name again.
Kelly Payton.
Kelly Payton.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, and you're asking for, um, tell me what you're asking for again?
So we're hosting the Horses and Hounds Halloween Hoopla. Last year it was the parade that we had for dogs and horse owners. Uh, and last year our staging area for the parade was the high school parking lot. And this year we're, uh, asking to change it to the old Food World parking lot. Uh, it has better access for trailers to enter and exit from the horse owners as well as, um, there were some concerns with horse trailers, uh, damaging the painted slots of the seniors in the high school lot. So I have been in contact with Lieutenant Renee about moving us to that old Food World and she approved a new route. Um, in addition, I, we've expanded the parade to include a festival this year in Central Park. I have the rental for the Park Food Parks and Rec and has submitted this special event request as well. Um, all the funds would be going to the King Stables Therapy and Equine Program with King's Home. Uh, King's Home is a growing presence here in Silicon Valley. We're looking to open up a first store over where the big lot used to be. And, um, everything, we're including local vendors, local businesses. I'm up to eighteen vendors right now for the event. Uh, so we'll have the parade with horses and dogs all dressed up in the Halloween costumes. And then the dogs that participate from the local shelter will then swing into Central Park for an adoption event. Last year we had four dogs from the parade alone get adopted. We're hoping to expand that and get the shelters more involved. Um, I know Alex City's also, uh, gonna join us as well, so.
May I, may I ask a question, two questions?
Yeah.
Referring my man, where you said you want to stage an area?
The old Food World parking lot.
Okay.
Is where they stage horses for the Christmas parade.
I have a question. I think the last one, I could be wrong. Um, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. The last time somebody wanted to use that property, you may have to sign some sort of waiver so that.
There was an insurance issue.
Yeah, there, yeah, it was something with the insurance. Something, they had to sign a waiver just to say that if something happened.
Yes, we have a waiver in, in for all parade participants that when they register to participate in the parade, there is a waiver, um, that they must sign that releases the city of Silicon Valley, King's Home, all areas of liability.
Alright, well, sounds like you have.
I've got everything.
Yes, sounds like you have all your ducks in a row.
I try.
Did you have another question, hey?
No, uh, was she, I was gonna ask her for, um, cleaning the mess up.
Yes, we have a food crew on site. Uh, we had that for the parade last year following the parade route to clean the street as well, as well as the parking lot.
Let it rip.
Yep.
So just remind us again the date of this, just so, um, the people can.
It'll be October eighteenth. It is in the morning. Uh, the parade is in the morning to avoid the trains. Uh, but it'll, the festival runs from nine A M. to two P M. and then the, uh, parade runs at ten A M. So everybody at the festival get a chance to see the parade go by as we circle through Silicon. It's about the same route as the Christmas parade minus one block.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you so much.
Good day.
Alright, you have a good night.
You have one as well.
Is that just before, how do we figure out some, some?
I don't, I don't think so. I think she just had to, um, tell us now. Is there, is there anybody else who didn't make the agenda that needed to be on the work session agenda? Alright, y'all, council, y'all have anything, mayor? Alright, so we are gonna have to go ahead and just end the work session because we're gonna have to start the council meeting at six because we have the public hearing. So we're gonna go ahead and, um, break until, um, six P M.